Here.
Here.
Matt Hawkins.
Here.
Mark Plummer.
Here.
George Sagarini.
Here.
City Clerk is here, Administrator Tim Miller.
Here.
Our interim City Engineer is absent. Attorney Robin Marau.
Here.
Administrative Services Director Jennifer Callaway.
Here.
Fire Chief Amy New.
Here.
Interim Police Chief Michael Harden.
Here.
Community Development Director Rochelle Kellogg.
Here.
Approval of the agenda, is there anything that needs to be added or deleted, council members? Seeing nothing. We move on to presentations for the evening. Item number one is the Mayor's Proclamation declaring the week of May the 21st through the 27th, 2017 as National Public Works Week.
Agenda posting.
Oh, sorry. City Clerk's report on agenda posting.
At 11:30 PM, on the 28th of April 2016, the agenda for this meeting was posted outside City Hall for public view.
Now we will move on to the Mayor's Proclamation declaring the week of May 21st through the 27th, 2017 as National Public Works Week. I would think the public would like to know what this resolution says, so I will go ahead and read it. Whereas, public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas, the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as streets, public buildings, and parks, and whereas, the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on those facilities and services, and whereas, the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas, the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, be it resolved that I Connie Williams, Mayor of the City of Sonora, declares the week of May 21st through the 27th, 2017 to be National Public Works Week in Sonora, California, and I call upon all citizens and organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public work officials and staff make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. And I want to say to the Public Works Department, if any of them are here, what a great job that they do with the limited resources that they have. Item number two is the Mayor's Proclamation declaring the month of May as National Historic Preservation Month. Proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Sonora declaring the month of May National Historic Preservation Month. Whereas, historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability, and whereas, historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas, it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of a heritage that has shaped us as a people. Whereas, "This Place Matters" is the theme for National Preservation Month 2017, encouraging people to celebrate the places that are meaningful to them and to their communities. Now therefore, be it resolved that I Connie Williams, Mayor of the City of Sonora, declares the month of May 2017 to be National Historic Preservation Month in Sonora, California, and I call upon the City of Sonora to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. Item number three, this evening Jonathan Skelly will be giving us a senior, presenting his senior project to us, is historic downtown Sonora walking tour.
Thanks, thank you. So if the name sounds familiar, it should, because we all know this is Tracy's son Jonathan. He came to the city and asked us what project he could do for us for his senior project. And we had been talking about with the new website wanting to have some type of a walking tour or an app that we could have on people's phones. So he liked the idea and he went to work on it. This will be something that we'll be able to keep updated, it'll go on the new website, people can do it on their phones, and he's going to train all of us on how to keep it updated and accurate and add things and take things away. It's quite a gift he's given the city and we're very appreciative of it. So he's going to do a presentation, I'm going to turn it over to Jonathan, and again, thanks for the gift he gave us.
All right, so I just have to turn this on, please.
Feel free if anybody wants to stand up and move over into the aisle or doorway to see this, if you're interested in moving.
All right. So. So I'm Jonathan Skelly, I'm a senior from Sonora High School, and every senior at Sonora High has to complete a senior project in order to graduate. So the senior project entails that it has to be something new that you've never done before, or else it kind of gets rid of the point of doing a senior project, because the whole point is to plan and do something entirely new. So, and then it has to be something that will take at least 15 hours to complete and something that will cost less than $600 when completed. So my idea was to do a walking tour for downtown, because unbeknownst to me, there was actually a walking tour for downtown already. It was a paper pamphlet that had different spots around the town that you could open up and walk around, but I didn't know that existed, and my mom works here, so. Anyway, so I looked at it, it was serviceable, it had around 20-something entries, but they're all short, you had to come in here to the City Hall to grab one, they had to be bought by the city, it was just not very efficient. So I was originally actually planning to do a paper pamphlet until Rochelle gave me the idea to make one that you could just access on your phone or the internet. So I then, after searching for a couple different formats to do it on, I tried looking for some different websites, different apps, they all had their downsides, websites weren't very mobile friendly, and if you just were able to pull it up on your computer, it would kind of defeat the purpose.
Please speak remotely so you can hear me.
Oh, okay, yeah, I can't, I can't tell, anyway. And the thing with making an app itself is that you would have, everybody who wanted to use the tour would have to download the app. So instead, I used a service known as Google My Maps, which allows you to create a map that is just a layer over the popular Google Maps, which can be accessed on the internet by anybody, or accessed in the Google Maps app on any cellphone, which I know any cellphone that runs on Android processing already has Google Maps installed as a default program. So here is what I have created so far, I do plan to add some updates and such, but anyway, when you log, when you, the map can be found on the internet, it can be saved as a link, or it can be embedded in a website, and once you click on any one of these, this is what it brings up, this is the web version of it. So I have 21 different marks on here, you can zoom in, you can zoom out, when you click on, this is the legend here, so basically I have a little blurb about the city as a whole, and I have all the information for the City Hall to contact them, any questions or concerns. When you click on a point, it brings up pictures of which I took myself for all 21 of the points on this map. They all have a little blurb telling what the building is, what the building used to be, what it was built for, who built it, anything pertinent like that. If it's somebody important, I would reference them by name and give them a bit of the history of that person as well, like when I did the Uptown Theater, which was owned by the Restano family, and that's a pertinent name in the Sonora area, so I would give information about those people. So basically, it's just a little blurb, it's usually less than one phone page in length. Got all the information from either the Sonora Historical Record or the CHISP, from the Historical Society, which is basically their newsletter. Other than that, I did not use any outside information, except to, I had to look up what was found in the Firehouse Museum, because their opening hours were always while I was at school, so I never had a chance to look myself, but all the historical information should be completely historically accurate. Building this and editing it for the city, which is probably going to be the biggest plus of doing it on Google Maps, is probably the easiest part. So this is the edit screen I have. I can share it with anybody in the City Hall who would then be able to access this screen and edit the map completely, they would have complete editing access, and they would then be able to share that editing access with anybody else. So once I share it with Rochelle Kellogg, she will be able to share it with anybody in the City Hall whom she thinks should be able to edit this map, and nobody else will be able to, except myself and whoever Rochelle gives the permissions to. So basically, as time goes on, this will need updates and such, but it's super easy, you simply click on a point there, if I wanted a point here, I would click, and up it pops, and you can type in the name you want, you can type in a description, you can add a picture, whatever you want, and so it's super easy. I, as far as improvements, I plan to add a few alternate routes to some things that weren't along the general direction of the tour. I tried to keep it just down Washington Street to keep it relatively short, but there are some landmarks in the Sonora area that should be added that aren't along that tour, such as the dome and the train downtown, and the Twolomee County Museum, and the Sugg House, that just aren't on that same route, and so I can add a whole nother thing to my legend that will be alternate routes, I'll make another line of a different color that will lead to all those other places so that they can, tourists can visit those areas if they would like to, and if they would not like to, they can just go on the normal route, which is around one mile in length, it's just a little over one mile. Anyway, so this program, as long as Google keeps updating Google Maps, which I don't feel like they will ever stop, it will just update as they update Google Maps, since it's simply a layer over it, so it'll never go outdated, and it will always be usable by anybody who can access Google Maps, which should be anybody with an internet connection, so. So basically it, I gave an example here, I emailed myself the link, so if I were to click on the link, it would take me directly to the tour. It gives me the edit screen because it knows that I have access. And then here, I should have some screenshots of the cellphone version, and then I'll be done. So this is what the tour looks like on your cellphone, anybody would be able to pull it up once I, once it's, you'll be able to pull it up once it's a link on any website. So basically, it has a little legend at the bottom, all the tour points in the center. This is what the legend looks like, it has all the points, has a short description there which is expandable. This is what it looks like when you click on a point, draws a little circle around it and states what it is down here. Then it gives the description, I have the address right there, and then followed by the description, and at the bottom, it shows the pictures I took. And when you click off of any given point, it shows this bar at the bottom that is exclusive to the cellphone version, that displays ads for the local businesses, so right here we have an ad for Embers, and next to it, an ad for the Hong Kong Restaurant. So people in the area, while they're using this app, will also be able to see the local businesses. Uh, I think, I think that's about it. So, yeah, like I said, I plan to come back and add some extra items, I plan to add some historical photos of all the points from the city's own webs, own record, and then I will come back, and this summer when I have time, I'll help teach the people who will be editing this map how to do it themselves, so that this tour can continue on into the future, and then it really just depends on marketing for how it'll take off, and that's about it.
So Jonathan.
Yeah, any questions?
Yes, so for the, for the people in the room and the people who are watching this in their homes, all I need is a cellphone.
Yep.
Do I need to download Google Maps to my cellphone in order to access this? How do I get to it?
So if you have the Google Maps app, yes, I see yours as an Apple phone, so I don't, I'm not sure whether or not it has Google Maps on it or not as an app, if it doesn't, Google Maps is a website in itself, all you would have to do is go to that link and click on it, and it would appear as Google Maps on just the Google Maps that's on the internet. It's perfectly capable of just running on the internet itself, and it gives you the option to run it in the Google Maps app if you have it. Also, once the, once it gets more traffic on the map itself, you'll be able to just type it in your search bar and it'll pop up. It should, the reason it doesn't do that right now is because there's just not many people who've gone to it, so it doesn't appear as one of the most relevant results, but once enough people do get on this map, you should just be able to type in "Historical Sonora Walking Tour Map" in your search bar of any search tool, and it should pop up just as a website, and you click on it and it'll bring it right up.
Okay, so historical, walking tour, Sonora.
Yeah.
And it'll come, and it should come up.
It should come up, once it gets some traffic going, yeah.
Great, so it's, it's ready for primetime?
It's ready, yeah, I, all I have to do is share the link with whoever wants it on the website, it can be on the city website, and the Historical Society, and Public Works, or whoever else you want it, and it'll all work the same, you don't have to have a Google account, you don't have to be signed into anything, it just puts a layer over whatever version of Google Maps you're using, and it just looks like that, so.
Great.
Can we put it on our current website, you know, we're redesigning the website, which is going to take a little while, can we put it on the existing website?
Uh, yes, you can, the link for it is just like any URL, it's just a text set, and so you can just copy and paste that, you can also embed it in a website, in which the map itself would appear on the website, and so all you would need to do, you wouldn't even need to make a new page for it if you didn't want to, but you could just make a new page and put that on there, or you could just have it in the info if people were, if there's a tourist section or whatever else, you could just put the link there for people to access.
Any other questions by the council?
No, just a big thank you, this is something I think is really needed, and I think, once we dig into it deeper, and, you know, sort of, I think for a lot of people traveling know more of our history, it's, it appears to be really accessible, and, I mean, Sonora's just a really neat city, and most people don't realize, even people that have lived here for a long time don't realize how neat our city really is.
Right, yeah, I didn't, I didn't know most of the stuff I write about, and I tried to include a little bit of everything, I have courts, and restaurants, and banks, and stores, fronts, and parks, and everything, I tried to do a little bit of everything that related to the Sonora area on there, just to get it, you know, entirely well-rounded view of the Sonora area. If there was something that was just, just a store, and nobody ever, nobody significant ever ran there, I tried to leave that stuff out, I tried to keep it stuff that would just be interesting for anybody to come up and read, because if it wasn't interesting, I mean, you have to keep people into it, they're not going to do the entire tour, so.
Well, one, one thing of note, it just hit me thinking about that, maybe shootouts, you know, old west shootouts, something like that, maybe throw in.
Yeah, I tried to add something anecdotal into every different entry, so like at the, at the Plaza Hotel, which used to be in the Courthouse Park, I did add that there was a shootout there over a court ruling gone bad, and just different things like that, I added the, how the Lick family of the Lick Building, they owned a candy shop, and her husband went to Bodie, where he supposedly lost all his money and then later died, leaving her with nothing, and so she had 10 bucks and bought a bag of candy and made a candy store, and that's how her family survived, and so I added, I tried to add a bunch of stuff like that, I tried to do something along the lines of that in every different entry, and then if there was something historical the building left, like at Servente's Saloon has the iron storefront, and at the bottom, it has the stamp of the date of when it was created, and so I took a picture of that and said, "If you look at the bottom third pillar of Servente's Saloon, you can see the maker's stamp from Sutter Iron Works," so I tried to add lots of stuff like that, so.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem. All right, any other questions?
So Jonathan, before you sit down.
Mm-hmm.
Couple of things, first of all, thank you very much for doing this.
Yeah, no problem.
The Vision Sonora Design Committee, this is one of the things that they wanted to see happen, is have a historical walking tour that would be mobile, so that people could use it when they come to town, and all of us could go, become more educated on what has happened here. So I'd like to present this Sonora Remembered book to you for the work that you did.
Thank you.
And good luck to you, and congratulations on graduating, and a wonderful future ahead of you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Item number four is outgoing recognition to interim Police Chief Michael Harden, and I believe that, Mr. Miller, do you want to say anything, or? And is he here?
He should be here.
Here he is.
There he is. I'd just like to personally thank Chief Harden for the time he's spent here at the city, the assistance he's provided to myself and the council, and his oversight of our department, and along with his insight of the department and its operations, and some of the recommendations that he's made that we'll be reviewing with the council. So we certainly welcome your time here and wish you well on your continuing retirement.
Thank you, I want to let you know how inadequate I feel that I'm only running a police department, but Jonathan created a walking tour, so wow. That's awesome, Jonathan, good job, so, but it's been my pleasure serving Sonora, you know, I haven't spent a lot of time here until I came up here, and it's, it's a hamlet, and I've been told on a number of occasions, it's unique, and it certainly is, but in a good way, and so it's been my absolute pleasure to assist Tim and the staff, and rest assured, every member of the police department, both police officers and the support staff, are fully committed to serving this community to the greatest extent they possibly can, so thank you very much.
I would also like to present to you a historical tribute to the, this little Gold Rush Town, Sonora Remembered.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for all of the time that you've spent with us and your expertise that you've brought forth, and we hope to see you coming back to visit our city, not in the police uniform, but just to have a good time.
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor, thank you very much.
Okay, item E is public comment, non-agenda items. The public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken, matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Is there anyone that would like to address the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to item F, the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be voted on in one motion unless a council member or member of the public has a question or wishes to discuss an item. In that case, the item will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. The items this evening are to approve the following meeting minutes. City Council Special Session Meeting of April 7th, 2017. City Council Closed Session Meeting of April 17th, 2017. City Council Open Session Meeting of April 17th, 2017. Item number two is the approval to pay invoices of previously budgeted expenses on May 2nd, 2017. An approval of disbursements in the amount of $156,605.61 on April 28th, 2017, for payroll inclusive of employee salaries, employer and employee taxes, and retirement contributions, leave payouts, and miscellaneous voluntary employee deductions.
Uh, Mayor, um, on the April 17th minutes, um, if I recall correctly that you appointed me as alternate, okay, you caught that too, alternate to the, uh, I'm working with.
Yes, that needs to be in addition to the April 17th, 2017.
And if that's the only correction you can make, I move on to the second.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Any public comment? And I'll bring it back to the council for a vote, all in favor? Aye. Item G, public hearing. Item number one is consideration to adopt Resolution Number 05-01-2017-A, approving the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the rezoning of 15 Pechi Way, Assessors Partial Number 035-230-3941 and 42 from planned development to general commercial. Introduced by Title Ordinance Number 839, amending the City of Sonora zoning map for Assessors Parcel Number, numbers 035-230-3941 and 42 from planned development PD to general commercial CG, and waive the first reading. And staff report from Ms. Kellogg.
Thank you. This is a little bit more complicated of a project than you guys normally have coming out of the Planning Commission, so tonight, we actually, I have, there'll be three of us speaking as part of the staff presentation before the applicant comes up. I will be presenting our staff report, Paula, Will, Diana Lick, who's the city planner, will be going over the SEQA document and some other items, and then we also have Ken Anderson here from KD Anderson, and he's the one that performed the traffic analysis for the project, because that is one of the more issues with the project that came out of the SEQA documents, as well as the public comment. So this is being recommended to you by the city council and also by staff, the meeting of the city council, or the Planning Commission was held on April 10th, it was unanimously, unanimously recommended, I can't say the word, for approval and certification of the SEQA document by the city council, or by the Planning Commission, and it was, there was, it was a packed room, so we'll go into a little bit of that as well, so it was a little bit more complicated of a project. So the city received an application from JK Properties, and it is to rezone three parcels, Parcels 035, 230, 39, 41, and 42. Those are the three parcels that the current Arco gas station sits on today, so they're, it's, they're fully developed, it has an existing use on it. Those parcels are all zone PD, you know, was part of a planned development project that included that, that subject parcel, as well as where the car wash, the gas sta, or the car wash and the Jiffy Lube, and that's, that commercial area right there, as well as the residential units that are across the street on Sylvan Lane, as well as, or Stephan Lane, sorry, Stephan Lane, and also Pechi Way as it goes around towards the cul-de-sac. That was all one planned development. The, the current zoning that, the zoning requests that we're looking at, or they have requested, is to rezone that one, those three parcels where the gas station is, from PD to general commercial. The Arco gas station was built, or was approved in 1990 for that site, and it was actually constructed in 1993. The construction of the residential structures across the street of Pechi Way near this project site, they were all built after the 1993 date. So this is what you're, we're looking at when we're talking about it, here is the planned development site, that it, and when it was approved, you had residential through here, and then you had commercial along Highway 49, and actually, in actuality, this was originally going to be a multifamily housing project, but instead it switched, they changed the PD to allow for the gas station and convenience store to go in, and that, again, was built in 1993, approved in 1990. So the reason we are looking at the CG, the CG is also, it's a use allowed by right, the gas station currently use, the use there is, is a use allowed by right in the CG zoning district. The surrounding zoning for that parcel, you have R1 to the west, you have CG, another CG parcel, and that's a vacant parcel, that's the former location of Sonora Motors, and it's also a commercially, a CG zone property, and then you have residential- And then, you have residential R2 to the east, and then to the south, or it's kind of southeast and south. You have, again, you have some more commercial to the south, as well as the residential that wraps around the parcel. So, it within, as far as consistency with surrounding zoning, the CG to the zoning with the CG parcel that is being proposed with the rezone, will make a contiguous parcel for, and it is consistent with the zoning for use of those parcels. Also, as far as the general plan, they're currently, the designation for the, that, the parcel being proposed for rezoning, the three parcels, is commercial. CG is consistent with that designation, and so it is found to be consistent with the general plan. The primary reason for this rezone is the Arco food court that's looking to be developed, or is proposed for the CG parcel up here. That is the reason for the rezone, as they are looking to access, one of the primary access for that food court would be through that other parcel. And secondary access that they're proposing for that project is off of Peshi Way, and it's in this location up here. So, there'd be two accesses. This is be in and out, coming off of Peshi Way through the gas station, and then a secondary access coming off at the cul-de-sac area off of Peshi Way is the two accesses. Again, like we talked about, that parcel's been vacant for many years. When they first evaluated it, they looked at the existing driveway off of Highway 49 as a possible access point for it. Ken and Paula will go into that a little bit more detail. But basically, the situation is that because of site clearance to the north, because of the hillside, and because of the distance from the Peshi Way intersection, and the clearance that would be required there, the improvement, they would not be able to get an access any longer off of Highway 49 for virtually anything that wants to happen on that parcel. Because it's a, it's been vacant for so many years, the driveway has not been used, everything would have to be brought to CalTown standard. And again, those are the two main, I'm sorry, the two main issues, and that is the clear, the site clearance, and also the location to Peshi Way. They will not allow them to use that existing driveway that's already there. So, that's the issue that came up with traffic. So, the, as, because of that, they looked at other accesses into the proposed food court, and that, they looked at going through the gas station with the two-way, in and out, and then also up on the cul-de-sac, and Paula will go into a little bit more detail. The other thing that is part of this is a lot line adjustment that will need to be done, and that's for the two smaller parcels, and that's 035, 230, 39, and 41. They're going to need to do a lot line adjustment between that, those two parcels and 035, 230, 40, which is the CG lot, which is the location of the proposed food court. Because of that, the zoning, there'd be a split zoning without this rezone, because you'd have those PD, the portions of those smaller parcels being merged with the larger parcel, the CG parcel, but yet they wouldn't have a consistent zoning on them. They would still hold their PDs. So, by doing this, it makes that consistent later on when they come back to do the lot line adjustment. It was, again, a unanimous decision of the Planning Commission. The major issues, there was a lot of comment from the public. The main issue with the project that we heard about, both in comments, that we received in writing, as well as the public comments at the meeting, were that, were related to traffic, and the concerns over the access points on Peshi Way. And so, we'll go into that a little bit more detail now. I will say that both the Planning Commission and city staff are recommending that you approve the following two items following the public hearing. In your staff report, one is Resolution Numbers 0501-2017A, approving the mitigated negative declaration and mitigated monitoring and reporting program for the rezoning from planned development PD to general commercial CG, and that's Assessors' Parcel Number 035, 230, 39, 035, 230, 41, and 035, 230, 42. We're also asking that you introduce by Title Ordinance Number 839, amending the City of Sonora zoning map for Assessors' Parcel Numbers 035, 230, 39, 035, 230, 41, and 035, 230, 42, from planned development PD to general commercial CG, and waive the first reading. So, again, tonight, you're being asked, this is strictly related to the rezoning of the parcels. It's not related to a site plan or development of the CG parcel. So, we will answer any questions that you have as we move forward, but Paula will come up now and do the SEQA part of it.
Thank you, Rochelle. All right. Mayor, council members, I'm going to briefly go through the SEQA, and I'm available to answer any questions if anybody has about it. The second item on your agenda as part of this project.
Do you have a quick question? If you're not going to refer to the slide, which I don't worry about. That's going to be more.
Doesn't matter to me.
Okay, because you have to see a reading.
Yeah, oh, I'm just looking at the agenda thing. I'm fine. So, the second item on your agenda tonight, actually, it's the first item, is the certification of the environmental document. So, as part of the project for the rezone, a initial study was done and a mitigated negative declaration was prepared. It was circulated originally as a request to change the whole area to PD, and they've since changed it to the request that's before you tonight to do the CG zoning. So, in the SEQA document that was circulated for public review back in February through the month of March, we did receive some comments. And as part of that process, we look at the comments received. There were five letters included in this session of review. Three of them were letters, or emails in particular, from neighbors in the area. And the issue areas that they brought up were comments concerning air quality, noise, and traffic. Those areas had been analyzed in the SEQA document. We had nine mitigation measures in the air quality, six in noise, and one in traffic within the documents, and no additional mitigation measures were needed. We also received two letters from state agencies, one of which is kind of a non-letter. The Regional Water Quality Board sends the same letter out on every single project, and it's basically a letter that says, these are all the things under the sun that we regulate. So, there was no additional analysis needed with that one. And then, we also received one from CalTrans, and Rochelle talked about the issues concerning CalTrans. They do control the right-of-way of 49, so they were included in the distribution. And their comment letter particularly reiterated the fact that they have the encroachment permit for anything in their right-of-way there on 49, so that would include the sidewalks and utilities or anything else that were done along 49, and that the applicant would need to pay traffic impact fees, which were already something that we do. And they also are asking for a keep-clear lane along Peshi Way where the other driveway coming from the opposite side of the Arco station would be, to help with the queuing of that roadway. As Rochelle mentioned earlier, Ken Anderson is here with KD Anderson. He did do the traffic analysis, and we've asked him to be here tonight to answer any questions that you have and to provide any additional information, because that was the topic of concern at the Planning Commission meeting back in April. The only other thing that came out of the meeting that was of note in particular and required a change was the Planning Commission did ask us to amend one of the biological resources mitigation measures in order to include specifically direction to the landscape plan, that it would be a fast-growing vegetation buffer along Peshi Way to help buffer those residences there adjacent to the project on Peshi Way. So, with that, I will let Ken go through some of the traffic analysis on that, and then we're available to answer any questions, particularly on the mitigation monitoring at plan or the SEQA document itself, if you have them. Ken?
Good evening, and Anderson, with KD Anderson and Associates, we're traffic engineering consultants out of Loomis. We've been working for the city for more than 30 years, I think now. We provided two services on this project. First, there was a traffic impact analysis to assess the project's impact on the Peshi 49 intersection. That analysis determined there was a significant impact associated with the project, but that could be mitigated by modifying the Peshi Way approach to provide separate left and right turn lanes. And with that improvement, the project's impacts there were not significant. Subsequent to that, we looked at the question of how much traffic associated with this project would be using the Peshi access and how much would go through the gas station. To put this in some perspective, the project itself generates about 1,900 trips a day, half that in, half of that out. Based on where the drive-through entrance was and what you can see traveling up and down 49, we determined that roughly a third of that traffic would probably use the Peshi access, and the other two-thirds would go through the gas station. That would result in 600 to 700 vehicles a day on the upper part of Peshi. Two ways to look at that. One, the Tuolumne County Transportation Commission has level of service thresholds for local streets. They conclude that a local street has the capacity to handle more than 5,000 vehicles a day. And that's different than perhaps the environmental capacity or the qualitative issues that residents would have for that, but from a standpoint of just the width of the road, it's enough road. Sonora doesn't have a threshold to say, this is what's an appropriate amount of traffic on residential streets. So, I looked at some other communities. Where we live, Roseville and Sacramento County have a maximum volume that they aim for on streets that have driveways, residential frontage. Those standards are 3,500 to 4,000 cars a day. So, the 700 that we see being added would be consistent with what other communities think is acceptable on a residential street. Those are the primary conclusions we had. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
You mentioned residential streets and the allowance for an amount of traffic, but this is a cul-de-sac. Does that change anything in your estimation?
No, not when we're, not when you're talking about through traffic once you make the connection. Trying to think. Some communities have standards for cul-de-sacs when they're one-way, as this would be before you added the connection. I've seen numbers in the thousand-car-a-day range, something like that. But here, because we have, it's now a through road, that would not apply.
Other questions by the council for Mr. Anderson or anyone else?
I have another question. I don't know who to address it to. Paula, I guess. So, CalTrans is saying that the existing driveway that's to the rezone property cannot be used.
Correct.
And what's the reason they're giving us?
So, the, this is a layout of the whole site. Basically, the issue is that CalTrans has standards for their driveways. There's two particular ones that come into play with this project. The first of which is, they have a distance, where's my little red button? I'm doing the wrong one there. A distance from an intersection, how far back, because they need things like turn lanes and deceleration, things like that. Usually, that's 350 feet. So, by the time you have that distance back from there, you're back towards the back of the property to start with. And then, the other issue that CalTrans has is with the site distance going this way. When you drive up and down 49, particularly coming into the site from out of town, the topography in the area makes it such that you can't see an upcoming driveway at this location. And so, there's not enough site distance in this area for the drivers to make those turns. And so, CalTrans would not allow that driveway to be located at that location for that reason. So, in order to address that issue and provide circulation, the applicant, oops, has done, I don't know if I can get it to go back all the way from here, has done a two-way driveway within the Arco site, which because of the planned development requires the rezoning that they're asking for tonight to alter the site to allow that access through their site. With the rezone itself, we did the public notice requirements that were needed, and all of the comments that we had received, either on the mitigated negative declaration during the SEQA review, or as community comments on the project of the rezone itself were included in your packets. And then, we did receive one additional email in support of the project, since the packets went out, and that was left at your spaces tonight. So, that's before you as well.
So, the driveway on Peshi, besides the driveway, there's another access, which is to the parking lot just beyond that driveway, right?
Right. So, there's two access points proposed and were analyzed as part of the SEQA document. The access coming from the existing Arco, so they can come in through Peshi Way here, go through the Arco, and then access the site here, and then also through a driveway here directly onto Peshi Way.
And then, just talking about the staff parking.
I'm sorry, oh, and the staff parking lot, yes. There's an additional parking lot back here that is an employee parking lot.
For that employee parking lot, is that accessible only through Peshi Way?
Yes. The topography is such that there's a drop-off. The landscaping area right here is a grade differential.
And that is strictly an employee parking lot?
Yes, and it would be gated according to what the applicant has told us.
Okay, okay.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to disclose that I have met with the proponent and with CalTrans quite some time ago, trying to determine other options that could be available. And the line of sight issue would require taking out a hillside. So, I did want to disclose that I have met and talked with the proponent. I don't have any other, I don't have any other questions at this time. If you have any other questions, we can wheel on up, but the applicant is here also for their presentation.
Hey, Mayor, I just want to make sure, just for spirit of disclosure, I was filming the Planning Commission meeting, so I did attend the Planning Commission meeting. So, I can do that on this.
Okay.
Well, if we're going to do that, I was also in attendance at the Planning Commission meeting, and I'm curious if anything's changed subsequent to that.
And since we're disclosing, I also attended the Planning Commission meeting.
I guess I'm the only one that wasn't at the Planning Commission meeting, and I wasn't there on purpose. I do have one question for traffic, traffic counts, and just throwing it out there, I try to play devil's advocate a lot, as I've stated before. You know, looking at the plans, basically, I guess my big question is, is the part that goes through the Arco parking lot, goes through that, the station's parking lot, when signs are erected, say if there was a sign that was put there that said, exit, you know, 49 this way, or something like that, how much will that affect, how much would that affect traffic counts not going through that part of the neighborhood or down Peshi Way?
If you, it depends on what day you might be doing it, whether you're catching Sonora residents or you were catching people.
Okay, just like a small sign that says, you know, exit?
Yep.
You know, or 49 this way type of thing, so someone pulls in and goes, oh, yeah, there's the XL, just go that way.
On a Saturday, that could make some difference. I couldn't guess how much that would be out of the 600 or 700 that we're talking about. I'd just be guessing.
Okay.
Okay.
And that brought up another question, Ken, I'm going to ask based upon Mr. Hawkins' question. So, just so the general public understands, when you're calculating how many additional vehicles are going to be utilizing this new food business, is there a standard that's used for different types of businesses that dictate or determine how many more cars will be utilizing that road?
That's a good question. In our industry, yeah, we have a bible that's data-collected nationally for different types of uses. In this case, we assumed we had a Starbucks-type coffee place with a drive-through. We assumed we had a neighboring fast-food kind of business that didn't have a drive-through. And then we assumed we had what we call a high-turnover sit-down restaurant. So the estimate we have represents very conservative uses that would be on there. Of those, Starbucks is the biggest generator on that kind of a use, especially in the morning. But yeah, our, the source we use is recognized by Caltrans, the city, the county, it's the standard reference that we all use, and it's based on data collected all over the country for specific uses.
Okay, just so the public understands. Okay, any other questions by the council? All right, then I will go ahead and open up the public hearing at 5:53 PM. And I will invite the applicant up first, if the applicant would like to come forward and address the council and the public.
Good evening. Thank you to staff for the introduction. My name is Ruben Churnside from Land and Structure, a local survey and engineering company. I'd also like to introduce Andy and Navnit, who are the owners of this property and project, been members of our communities for the past five years. Today's hearing is about a zone change on the ARCO property and a mitigated negative declaration relating to that zone change. This proposed zone change will allow the lot-line adjustment and the redevelopment of an existing abandoned commercial site at the entrance to the city that has been vacant for many years. The key to tonight's discussion is that by allowing a zone change on the ARCO property, a driveway can be constructed to link the ARCO site to the proposed project site. This is the key to reducing the amount of traffic on Pesci Way. The SEQA document that is before you tonight was prepared to assess the impacts of the zone change, which includes the impacts of the proposed development. While the project itself is not before you for an approval because it does not require a site development application, I'll be discussing components of the project and how they impact the mitigations proposed in the SEQA document that was prepared for the zone change. The assessment and design of the potential project has been developed over the past three years and has involved consultation with Caltrans, utility companies, the city planning department, the city engineer, Ken Anderson, and the historical review of the existing building that's on the vacant parcel, the old Motherlode Motors building. Much effort has gone into preparing an economically feasible project that will provide services, jobs, and revenue to the city, improve an abandoned site at the city entrance, and minimize impact to adjacent residences. The basic concept is to develop a food-related building and the associated parking, utilities, and landscaping adjacent to seek potential tenants. No tenants have been confirmed at this time. There are five main aspects of the project that I would like to review. The reasons for not being able to construct a Highway 49 encroachment, the benefits of linking the project to the gas station property, the need for some access onto Pesci Way, the proposed improvements to the intersection of Pesci Way and Highway 49, and the additional parking provided onsite over and above city requirements. We've already discussed the issues on Highway 49. While there is an existing paved encroachment onto 49 and is not legal to use it for a new project without Caltrans' permission. Caltrans' encroachment permits do not follow the title of a property, so when a property changes hands, technically, a new permit should be issued. Also, when the use on a parcel changes, Caltrans is required to review the proposed use and the adequacy of the encroachment. Caltrans has strict design requirements for an encroachment onto a highway, which involves site distance from other, involves distance from other existing intersections, site distances, driveway width, turn lane requirements, and driveway tapers. The existing encroachment does not comply with any of the Caltrans requirements. The main impediment to reconstructing a new encroachment is that the existing site distance to the north is limited by the neighboring property and the curvature of the highway to approximately 150 feet. The Caltrans standard would require a site distance of 460 feet, which is not achievable. For these reasons, proposing an encroachment onto Highway 49 is not possible. Given the expected resistance to adding traffic to the upper portion of Pesci Way, the next best alternative for accessing the property is to link it to the ARCO gas station property. This would allow two-way traffic to travel between the two properties and utilize the existing ARCO encroachment onto Pesci Way. There is also a synergy between the gas station business and food service businesses having a common access point. It is an established practice to incorporate food service with gas station properties. The proposed driveway between the two properties works well for both business units and reduces the traffic loading on the upper portion of Pesci Way. The development of this driveway requires a zone change on the gas station property to allow the adjustment of the site layout that was defined under the old planned development project. This is what is being voted on here tonight. The second exit from the proposed project is intended to prevent the overburdening of the ARCO traffic circulation during limited periods of time. It is proposed that through the usage of signage, customers would be requested to exit through the ARCO property. Signage would prohibit the use of the upper exit after 8:00 PM to reduce noise and headlights on the upper portion of Pesci Way. Based on the mitigations recommended by the traffic study, if the project proceeds, alterations would be made to the intersection of Pesci Way and Highway 49 to allow separate striped lanes for both left and right turns out of Pesci Way, improving the functionality and safety of the intersection for all users. Another measure to reduce the traffic impact on the upper portion of Pesci Way, the project includes 39 onsite parking spaces, which is over twice the quantity required by the city ordinance. Providing dedicated employee parking onsite will also eliminate the need for on-street parking on Pesci Way, leaving this road available for use by local residents. The proposed project represents an addition to the existing commercial area that contains the ARCO gas station, an oil change, car wash, and retail center adjacent to Highway 49 at the north entrance to the city. The project is consistent with the city's general plan, and the majority of the project site is zoned general commercial, which is suitable for this type of development. During the development of the design, alterations have been made and mitigations proposed to reduce the impact to the six homes which overlook this existing commercial area. The zone change that is before you tonight will allow the construction of the access between the ARCO and the project site, ultimately having the greatest impact on reducing the traffic volumes on the upper portion of Pesci Way. If there's any questions, I can take those.
Council members, any questions at this time?
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and, I've opened up the public hearing, so anyone that would like to address the council may come up to the podium and do so.
Hi.
Hi.
Can we get a different slide? The slide of the project that's closer, that one black-and-white line slide. My name is Tina Lanter, and I live on Pesci Way. I'm a high school biology teacher, and a grandmother, and a mother. This one. So if I could show, I don't know if you've got, have you driven up there at all to see? Yeah, so here is, this is a retired couple. They bought, they came from the Bay Area, bought their retirement home here. This is me. Yeah, this is me, and then we have a grandmother, and here, we have a family here with little kids, and we have a family here with little kids. And as you can imagine, we thought we purchased a home on a cul-de-sac, you know, with limited traffic, and right now, there's maybe 50 cars a day that would go in and out of that street, which is mostly only us or the police patrolling, which we really appreciate and enjoy. And I just want to point out right now, here is all bushes, so we all understood we bought a house across from a gas station, of course. We understand that these are just bushes that separate us, but it makes this street very quiet, and it protects, you know, it makes a really good barrier between us and them. And then here, where the proposed, so this is not here at all, so this is all just bushes, and then this is a big oak tree, and just wildlife right here. So basically, here's ARCO, and then all of this isn't, you know, isn't exposed. We feel really protected, and we don't hear the highway, we don't hear traffic, and it's, it was really a beautiful street. So as you can imagine, we're all grieving a lot at the potential that three fast-food restaurants are going to change that for us. Understanding that the property owners and that lot that was a Jeep dealership at one time have the right to develop their property, what we're asking and what we would really, really appreciate, and I don't know how much you can do for us, but what we're here to say is if, if this street did not go in here and one of these pumps, so what we were doing at the, at the planning commission meeting is we were suggesting, can't the traffic all just come in and out here? And couldn't you take out a pump and just go in and out like that? And not have to use the street and add 700 potential cars a day, as was suggested by the traffic report? This, of course, we would love for this not to happen, because this is going to expose us now to the whole project too, where right now, we see this greenery and trees. And I know we're just six people, and I know we, you know, we own six properties that probably total one and a half million dollars that we purchased, you know, hoping for equity and all that. And I, I get it's not about us, because we heard at the planning commission that there's jobs and there's growth, we have to think about people from Columbia who would enjoy to have a fast-food restaurant closer to their home. I get all that, but it's not just us. What I just would like to suggest or argue is that Sonora High just built a new cafeteria, which they would prefer children to eat at their new cafeteria that our tax dollars is paid for and not be coming up to this other, you know, all these restaurants over here. I thought the Sonora Vision, which I thought was an organized group, I'm not part of that group, I work out of town, or else I would be, but I thought Sonora Vision, the organized group, was seeking to make the downtown more accessible and attractive and quaint to encourage tourism down there, and encourage people to come to the businesses down in the downtown area, which this is going to detract from, this coming, these restaurants here. Because if you can imagine, people coming down 49, they know ARCO's there, they can get a quick bite, but they can also keep going to Tallulah's, or whatever, you know, downtown. So I don't understand how this is in the Sonora Vision. I don't understand why we need three more fast-food restaurants in our town. And I would love to not have a parking lot built across the street from my house where six employee, or whatever, 11 employees could park. I'm not, I don't know why they can't just park below. But anyway, I would hope in your decision, you could acknowledge the six families that live on that cul-de-sac. We've been there for, I think that they started building those homes 20 years ago. I've been there 10 years, it's been beautiful and wonderful, and I hope you can think about us when you're making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jackie Amaro. I'm an employee at Sonora Regional. I'm one of the six residents. I live at the very end of the court and would be looking at an employee parking lot. Now, I moved up from the Bay Area to get away from the constant stream of traffic. I came up here, I bought my house for half a million dollars. I guess, you know, stupid should have been written across my forehead, because somehow, I guess I should have known that at some point, somebody was going to do this. Now, I don't know where all of you live, but can you imagine an extra 600, 700 cars up and down your street every day? I don't know, I can't. That's why I purchased that home at the end of the quiet cul-de-sac. That's probably why I got rimmed when I paid half a million dollars for it, I don't know. But I don't care what they do down there, and I don't care the color-coded maps, I don't care what ABCs we're going to slap on all these developments, I don't care. They're homes, families. We don't care what he does down at the bottom of the hill, we just don't want his customers coming up to the end of the court. That's, he can make it work, he's got plenty of space down there. Because Sonora PD, I've got you on speed dial, when my piece is disturbed, when I feel threatened, when the customers are loud, I'll be calling you. I just want protection. Caltrans has their say, planning commission has their say, what about me? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Sharon Merovich, and I'm representing the Tuolumne Heritage Committee. Excuse me. We're concerned about the appearance of the project. It is at the northern gateway to Sonora's historic district, and it's on Highway 49, which is a heritage corridor. The fact that you declared May Preservation Month in Tuolumne County tells me that you're interested not only in historic preservation, but in the quality of the infill buildings that we do have in Sonora. We believe that a series of fast-food restaurants will occupy the new building, and we all know how insistent they are regarding the design of their franchises. The Tuolumne Heritage Committee asks that you be equally insistent about the design of the proposed new building. This, if you can call it a drawing, is sketchy at best, and it shows the major expanses of plywood, big glass windows, and fake rock. It looks like it came out of a computer. It is not suitable for the northern gateway of the city of Sonora. It needs to be completely redesigned. Also, if you would look on page 29, 21 of the mitigated negative declaration, the design is labeled "proposed." But what is the design? That will finally wind up on that site. And we also, just to add something that hasn't been mentioned, since these are fast-food restaurants and the neighbors are so concerned about 700 additional cars a day on their street, you could require that there be no drive-up windows. Other cities do that. We ask that you enter into a development agreement, and we're asking you to do that because you can't condition zoning. So we're asking you to enter into a development agreement with the applicant that will show you exactly what the building will look like and the proposed signage. If you took a real quick look at this drawing, you see there's a menu board right next to the highway. Do we want a backlit, lighted menu board right next to Highway 49? I don't think so. The aesthetics section of your mitigated negative declaration states on page 20 that the project will have no impact aesthetically. You can't make that finding until you know precisely what the proposed new building would look like. That's why you should take the extra step of requiring and reviewing an architectural rendering of the building. That way, the northern gateway to our historic town can be protected from franchise architecture that is only hinted in the drawing that you have proposed. Our request will not cause any delays and should have been provided with the original proposal last year. Your staff will tell you that you can't require design review, even though this is commercially, it shows on the general plan, it's commercial. Commercial has design review, but because this is commercial CG, commercial general, your staff will tell you, you don't have design review on it. That's why we're suggesting you enter into a development agreement, so you know exactly what's going to go on that site. This city has dealt over and over and over again with fast-food restaurants, and you know how tough they can be in wanting exactly what they want. We want the best for the northern entrance of our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you mind if I speak first? My wife's got to go to work.
My name is Ron Amaro, I live on, pass your way up on, on the cul-de-sac. We're talking about cars. We're talking about cars here, you know, cars, 600-something cars. What I want to know, I drove trucks for 10 years. I want to know if food trucks is going to go down my street. I know how hard it is to break when a child runs out in front of a truck. Now, most of you don't realize how dangerous that is. A child is a child. He'll run between cars, he'll run out in the middle of the street. You mean to tell me on the downgrade like that, trucks are going to come down, 27-quarter doubles are going to come down our street and it's going to stop in time when a child runs out in front? Those are the things we've got to consider, the safety of our children. And if we don't consider the safety of the children, then what's the world coming to? Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, good evening. My name's David Polanco. I'd like to make a short statement in support of Andy's project. There are those that would like no additional growth within our community and those folks are getting just that. According to the California Department of Finance in their 2012 report, our county is projected to lose 4% of its population from 2006 to 2016. Of the majority of age groups reported to be departing our area are the working adults aged 40 to 54. They are leaving for jobs we do not offer them. Small business is the backbone of our society, as it is with our own country and city. We cannot afford to miss opportunities to increase our employment base upon which provide muchly needed taxes. New business offers additional services to the shopping public. The new employee will generate taxes for our local economy, as well as support other retail outlets by purchasing their goods and services. You'll have to agree that Andy and his wife Nabnit run a very successful operation providing a much-needed product to the motoring public. He has increased sales of the business by over 50% since he and his wife acquired the business. You also know that soon we will be losing another gas station on Greenlee and those employers are going to be looking for work. Andy and his crew are very courteous and friendly to all who patronize his business. He is an excellent businessman and I know he would create a first-class operation in his new endeavor, given the chance. Andy has invested thousands to date with no return on the investment. He will invest thousands more in upgrading the site as proposed. There are other communities that would readily accept him should he decide it too difficult to grow his operation in this community. His competitive pricing and excellent service has kept the motoring public close to home as opposed to buying their gas elsewhere. I'm sure you are aware, should Andy not be successful in his bid to upgrade that old building, it will stay vacant and likely return to its original dilapidated condition. Someone said you can please some of the people all of the time, you can please all of the people some of the time, but you can't please all the people all the time. I know you made the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the council?
Good evening. Mike, I am a Tuolumne County Chamber of Commerce, Government Affairs. I think you know what we're about. We're about business, we're about jobs, we're about economic development, economic vitality. I think this project will help your city, the city of Sonora. On the other hand, I also am an advocate for private property rights. I think David or the Singh family that owned the Arco Station and the other piece of property have a right to do what they're going to do on their property as it's proposed. I'm not here to tell them how to build it, what to build, or what food to serve. I think it's up to them as owners to figure that out, marketing studies, what have you. And I also, to remind myself and us, we're not here to tell them how to build, what to serve, what kind of food, but we're here to say, we're here to talk about the mitigated negative deck. We're here to talk about the Sonora zoning map, which I think are really the two items on the agenda. This is a planned development, converting to commercial general, excuse me. It does meet your general plan and your zoning maps. It also enables a contiguous zoning district. It's a food establishment on the north edge of Sonora, which I think would be a welcome addition. I know some are concerned about that, but I think, again, choice is welcome. I think one of your other speakers talked about the revenue stream that I think will be helpful to the city of Sonora. I thought from the Planning Commission, the other issue is that if they don't get the zoning, then it becomes a street from the food establishment into Pesci with all the traffic going onto Pesci instead of one-third. Again, I think that's a benefit to the zoning and the mitigated negative deck. So, I would ask you to approve the two items on your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Klimke with the Tuolumne County Building Industry. We support and agree with the findings of the Planning Commission and also the staff findings on this report. We think it is an excellent opportunity, having joint ownership out there to be able to mitigate a problem now, today. If it is not provided in that fashion, who knows what would happen in the future if they had to sell the other property and once again divert all traffic through Pesci. We request your support of this as well. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Glenn Caldwell. I'm here as president of the Tuolumne County Business Council. I represent business owners in the county and in the city and we are formed to educate one another on various state, local, and federal issues and then take positions locally for projects that are before you like tonight. We stand in favor of the project and the two decisions you asked to be made tonight. Throughout your packet, you'll see a very well-thought-out, very well-studied, and very complete proposal to be able to make the decision for the zoning change. We're not here tonight to look at the elevations or the final design of a building. The decision tonight to rezonate moves the project along to where we can get to that point. It's interesting that we had a proclamation by the mayor tonight in support of the staff and the planners of the city, and the staff really have done a good job, being very thorough. And your Planning Commission came to that conclusion. There was a lot of discussion at the Planning Commission meeting about the alternative of not making this decision tonight, okay? It could be possible that the zone does not change. However, that parcel still has the right to make a driveway out onto Pesci up near the cul-de-sac. If that, if the project moves in that direction, then you're going to have 100% of the food court traffic going by these houses, okay? Your decision tonight actually limits, by the testimony of Mr. Anderson, actually limits the projected amount of traffic that will come in off of, up by the homes. It's unfortunate that we find ourselves in these situations where we have mixed use close to one another, but the rights of the individual are still subordinate to all of us in society. We have four or five homeowners that we have to be compassionate about. And while I was at the Planning Commission meeting, I used the term that their testimony was emotional. I would like to apologize for that testimony because I found a better word. It's really a social, they're social testimony and they have the right to say and be compassionate about their street. At the same time, the business community, if we're going to invoke a social argument, you have a piece of property that's just a really ugly eyesore up there. And your decision tonight will also help to resolve some of that. It is a gateway to your town and it has been so poor so long, so ugly, okay? Your decision to support the rezoning will help to improve the gateway and we'll get down to the details when we get further along in the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we have someone else walking up.
My name's Greg Popovich and I was on another project, but at the same time at a meeting with the mayor and Andy and his wife regarding the Caltrans issues on that property and some surrounding properties as well. It was very disparaging to me to hear what Caltrans had to say at that point. Basically, Pesci Way is the only access to that property. And what the Sings have done is taken what could be a final outcome of entering and exiting off of Pesci and created another solution, which actually helped mitigate some of that. I know that that doesn't put the homeowners at rest, but what we're dealing with is the fact that they've done all they can do to mitigate something that Caltrans is basically imposing on the property owner. And that's taking away his access to his property. He would much rather access from Highway 49 where a fast food restaurant would have much more traffic, but with the limitation of viable business. I commend the Sings for what they're doing and support their project and actually have looked at it from a standpoint of how could they make it better? And I didn't come up with any viable options other than what they're doing. And it's a good project. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the council? See, I will close the public comment period at 6:24 and bring it back to the council. And it's been mentioned several times, but what we're here to do tonight is to approve the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program and for the rezoning and also introduce by Title Ordinance Number 839, amending the city of Sonora zoning map and waive the first reading. That's what we're here for this evening. Are there any questions or comments?
Paula, just to confirm a couple of issues. The design of the project at this point is not what we're discussing at all.
No, the project does not fall under design review. Only those in the C District do. And tonight, the project before you is the rezon, so the design is not part of that. We included proposed elevations in the project materials that were. So, with the zoning map, what you're looking at is the pink lot is currently zoned CG. So, that lot right now could be developed into the proposed food court without the zone change, but in doing that, they would have to access and work within their current configuration, which would only leave the access on the northern area of Pesci Way. The planned development that was applied to the mini-mart locked in the site plan of that mini-mart and the request is to change that to CG so that they can alter that to provide the alternative access. So, right now, the lower area access is currently off of Pesci Way. Neither one of those have access on 49 because of the Caltrans requirements. So, that's the only other way to access that property is off of Pesci Way.
Thank you.
Ms. Merovich mentioned about the planned development agreement, or the development, not planned, a possibility of development agreement. Is recognizing that historical values bring people to our community and honor responsibility to our community, is there, is there a function that can happen or is this completely? I mean, I guess what I'm asking is, is she, what she is saying, is she correct that they can enter into development agreement if they want to?
They could. There's no trigger for a development agreement at this point. Usually, a development agreement would be something that would be on a subdivision or a larger project like that. There is no trigger for us to require a development agreement on this project. And one of the things we talked about at the Planning Commission that hasn't really come up at this meeting yet is the reason we're very clear on what your entitlements are tonight is because a rezon cannot be a conditioned item. You can either approve a rezon or deny a rezon. You can't condition a rezon. So, the mitigation measures in the SEQA analysis is something that we ask you to certify saying that all of the issues have been looked at and adequately analyzed. And if that is the case, then certification of the document is the recommendation. So, there's not a trigger for entering into a development agreement.
Other questions, comments?
I've got comments, a lot of comments, I guess. So, I guess I'll start out this way. I get the idea with the neighbors, I really do get the idea. The neighborhood I grew up in was established in the late 40s, typical post-World War II neighborhood. And then along come the 1980s and they put a shopping center in. And unfortunately, at the time, the city that I grew up in did not take up for the neighbors, they didn't put things in place and it really created some interesting situations. Looking at everything here, seeing that there will be an employee parking lot that has gated access, so not everyone can just drive in and park there, that type of thing, I think it's very good. I met Andy, I guess about four years ago and he sought me out to meet me and he was introducing himself to everyone else too. And what I thought was really neat was that he was doing his part to be accepted into the community. Hey, I'm taking over this business. Yes, he's made it successful. I know some of the stories, what happened prior there, he has done his job. He does employ people, he does pay higher wages, the minimum, just minimum wage. And, you know, so I guess I empathize on both ends. You know, people have a right, in my opinion, to use their property the way they want within reason, as long as they're not, you know, environmentally, you know, dumping something there, that's. At least in the, everything here, you know, greenery and that sort of thing. And there's some there now, but there's also what appears to be shelving that's sitting on the side of the road, steel bars from shelving. I was up there. By the way, I did not have a single person from Pesci Way contact me, although I spent probably in the last two weeks at least an hour and a half up there, just walking around, taking a look at things. So, I know the area fairly well now, but again, from my knowledge of fast food, from my knowledge of gas stations, this appears to be a very spot-on project of what they're proposing here. Again, I can empathize with people that live on Pesci Way, but there's a property there that will be going through unless we make the changes here and all the traffic will be going through Pesci Way. Every single bit of it will be going by the cul-de-sac. So, I think if we do our job as a city to protect the citizens that live there, then I think that it's going to mitigate a lot of that traffic. I think that's all I have to say. I think that's all I have to say.
Mr. Plummer, anything?
A little bit. I think the most crucial element to remember, and I'm very glad that I did attend the Planning Commission meeting, was that should we choose not to approve these two measures, then 100% of the traffic will go through Peshi Way to whatever is developed through that. And as I understand it, please correct me if I'm wrong, that if we don't change the zoning, that if they check all the correct boxes, it becomes a, it's not a vote, it's not open to the public, that it is automatic, that if they do the right things, that whoever owns that for whatever project that fits the zoning, it will be approved and they will be given access to their property through Peshi Way. Is that correct?
Yes. What you're hitting on is that the other entitlements that are necessary are what are called ministerial, which means that they are things like a building permit. If you meet the requirements according to the building code, the city must give you the building permit. So the only other requirements, or I'm sorry, entitlements that were left were lot line adjustment, an encroachment permit, a building permit. So those would be ministerial and would not come back before either the Planning Commission or yourselves.
Thank you very much. It's reassuring to know that I understood correctly. So the best thing we can do for the homes and property owners on Peshi Way then would be to approve this, as I understand it. And while I can empathize and would be very unhappy in their position, it's either some or all that our decision tonight is going to make.
Nicely put. Okay. It seems that we're in the position now for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll move approval to adopt Resolution Number 05-10-2017-A, approving the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the rezoning of 15 Peshi Way, Assessors Parcel Number 035-230-3941 and 42, from planned development to general commercial, introduced by Title Ordinance Number 839, amending the City of Sonora zoning map for Assessors Parcel Number 035-230-3941 and 42, from planned development to general commercial and waive the first reading. And with that, I would like to say, I too am glad I attended the Planning Commission meeting because I think the Planning Commissioners did an excellent job in reviewing this project. And they did everything possible to try to appease the neighborhood. And I don't blame them for that because I've driven up there and I wouldn't mind living in that neighborhood myself. It's just a nice little small community. So I commend the Planning [inaudible] That'll go with my motion.
I'd like to second George and I would like to say that, you know, I do appreciate the Planning Commission because I did hear that they were doing their best to try to mitigate that, so.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
I guess the only thing I would say would just like to appeal to the Singh family to do consider historical values in the future, in the project. Our history here is important to us and brings people here and I think it also helps, it helps our economy as well by bringing these people here. And I just, it's certainly not a requirement, and I wouldn't necessarily even ask for it to be a requirement in this case. However, it's what makes Sonora and Twalney County unique, so I would hope that you at least take that into consideration in the future.
Before I call for the vote, I would like to say, first of all, thank you to the proponents, the owners of the property. For many years, that property sat there with a lot of junk and it wasn't a very pretty sight. The day that you all started cleaning it up, I've had several people say to me, and every time I drive by there, I think, isn't that wonderful? At least it got cleaned up. The one thing I would ask is, since it doesn't have to come back for any kind of a design approval, to put in as much foliage as possible to protect the neighborhood so that they can still have some kind of a neighborhood. And I know that you all have, all of you who have worked on this project have really thought it out and utilized any available aspect that you could to make it the best project that you could based upon the circumstances. So I thank you for that. And when you're designing it, make it something that we, the people of the City of Sonora, including yourself, will be proud of. And I guess I need to ask if there's any additional, no, the public hearing is closed. Do I need to ask for a public comment before the vote? No. Okay. Then, okay, then I'm going to go ahead and ask for the vote. All in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone, for your input. We'll move on to Item H.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to let you know that we will be bringing this back for a second reading at the next meeting. So it will come back for the second reading and the adoption of the Title 17 zoning, for the zoning ordinance. So it will come back to your next meeting.
At this juncture, I think we'll take a five-minute break before we get into the Item H. Councilmember Plummer? We're going to go ahead and get started. So we're not here until 10 o'clock? Oh, all right. Well, all right. also for the people in the hallway, if you all will take your conversation down to the bottom of the stairs or close the doors or whatever, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to Item H, unfinished business. This is continued consideration of the Twalney County Economic Development Authority, proposed fiscal year 2018 budget for approval, changes or modifications as may be recommended by the City Council. And we have a, we have a staff report, but I believe it's
I'll start.
Staff report?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, members of the council, you have included in your packet a memo from the City Attorney's Office. Deputy City Attorney Robin Burrell will talk about that in a moment. I just wanted to review staff's position and provide you some additional information since your last meeting. We've included for discussion later tonight, our third quarter financial report for this year. Our costs in, health costs and leave payouts have created a deficit that's even higher than what we had anticipated. You'll see that when we review that. But on that basis, we have recommended, and the Finance Committee has recommended, that through the end of the year, all non-essential and non-committed expenditures be frozen for the remainder of the year, indicative of what we see our financial position to be this year. And with regard to next year's budget, while we talked last time about it being a status quo budget, given the need to improve our reserves and the projections for our revenues versus our expenses and looking at deficits over the next few years, each department is now being required to provide at least a $30,000 budget reduction in their proposals. So we're no longer at a status quo situation. And it could be accomplished either through reduced expenditures or increased revenues or a combination. But that's what we will bring back to you for your consideration when we present the budget, either at your, it'll likely be the first meeting in June. So given our current financial position and the direction we provided to the departments and our expectations for next year's budget, we continue to recommend that the TCEDA fiscal year 18 budget remain at its current level. And I'll turn it over to Robin so he can review the issues in the memo that was prepared, which were to identify the city's contractual obligations with respect to the budget and what the council's options might be with regard to the budget and how the budget is processed for TCEDA.
Good evening. So our office reviewed the JPA between the city and the county to understand the obligations under that document. And there's also an amended joint powers agreement as well. So there's two documents that we reviewed. Our office also did reach out to County Council and the EDA staff to share our thoughts about the JPA. But ultimately, this report is based on our review of the documents. I'll briefly summarize our findings. With relation to the funding obligations specifically, there's two aspects I think are worth highlighting in this analysis. The first is, the JPA sits forth a pretty specific method for calculating the percentage contribution. And that's where the first part of this memo identifies the percentage. The JPA doesn't fix a certain amount of funding. So that's what brings us to the position we are here, is that there is some latitude in how the funding amounts are set. Ultimately, funding is established by the EDA Board. The EDA Board is comprised of members of the city and members of the county, along with other members. And in order for a motion by the EDA to pass, such as approval of the annual budget, there must be a vote by the city representation and a vote by the county representation. So to summarize all this, the percentages are the percentages. We went through and explained how the percentages are calculated. But when you talk about the amount, the amount, the city has some latitude to establish an amount that they would recommend to the EDA Board and to instruct the City Council representatives to carry out that recommendation at an EDA Board meeting. And if you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them as well.
Questions by the council for staff?
So just to get this straight, each department is being required to provide at least $30,000 in budget reductions from each department in the city?
That's correct.
Any other questions or comments? Then I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. And one of the things that I would like to ask is, for those of you that were here at the last meeting and commented, unless you have something additional to add, what I'd like to do is ask for those who have not commented yet to come up first.
My name is Bob Edwards. I'm a member of the Business Council. And I've worked with Larry Cope for years, ever since he came up here. And I've seen the efforts that he's put forth in bringing business to this county. He brought in Coles after Gottschalk's left. Mervyn's left. He put in three businesses there. He put in Panda Express. It just goes on and on and on. And if you can't keep Larry on and keep him busy, he's busy and he's able to pay his way. And one of the things that you just approved here will be essential in bringing money to this county and this city. And I think it's important that you keep Larry in mind because he's done wonders for this county and the city both. And neighboring counties also. He's got more get up and go than you can imagine. You can't keep him from talking. Anyway, I've said my piece and I want to keep him here.
Good evening, council. My name's Doug Kennedy and I'm one of the partners at Trade-O Restaurant Corporation. We are the owners of the Bourbon Barrel and the soon-to-open Green Dog Beer Company. I met Larry Cope when I was involved with the concert series at Ironstone Vineyards. And most of my effort and attention was put towards Murphy's and Calaveras County because I had problems dealing with the downtown city area and also things that were going on in the county here in Twalney. Through numerous meetings with Larry Cope over a couple of years, a stretch of a couple of years, I was convinced that things downtown were changing and that there was a growth opportunity downtown in Sonora. And I really took that to heart. Larry worked diligently with me, not only through the Bourbon Barrel, but some of the other things that I was looking at and looking to plan to do downtown, some of which we haven't even announced to the City Council or to the public. Larry stepped up, had conversations, worked through problems that we had, and really put his economic hat on to figure out, how can we change the downtown area and Twalney County as a whole by not only just putting businesses in place, but also bringing in jobs and really making the area a place that people want to come and either retire or actually move to? I personally think that it sends a very, very poor message to new businesses coming in and also a business like my own, which is in midstream. I've committed over $2 million into the Beer Garden project with the notion and the thought that there was going to be a push for economic downtown development. And taking revenue and taking budget away from, you know, a group like what Larry runs really sends a negative message, not only to myself as a business owner, but also to all the other business owners that I'm addressing and convincing that downtown's where we need to have growth. We've seen the new bridal shop open up. We have a sushi restaurant. We have a noodle shop that's come in, a taproom, the Cheesy Whiner, and a number of other businesses that are evaluating the downtown area that need somebody like Larry to get involved to make sure that they understand what the benefits of being in downtown Sonora are going to be. And, you know, I really put it to the board that if we're talking about this size of money, take a look at the investment that all of these other business owners have made and look at the investment that I've made and understand that it takes somebody like Larry to really drive this message and to encourage this growth. I understand and I feel for you guys in terms of budget shortfalls and money that you may not have or what you're trying to do in terms of building up reserves. But you have to look at it from a standpoint of, you're going to get those reserves built up when the Beer Garden opens up. You're going to have new businesses downtown. And we need to be investing in the city, not looking for ways to reel things in. not looking for ways to reel things in and take away really good divisions and budget items that are going to have an impact on growth. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Mike Lemke, representing Toolumee County Building Industry. There are very few effective tools that state, federal, local government can employ to actually create growth, to help create it, and a investment in Larry Cope's team is one of those tools that we have here that has proven to be extremely effective. Our memberships see it on a regular basis. The signal to lose that would be horrible, not only for the short-term, midterm, and the long-term investments that we see several organizations are putting into place today. We are just now starting to see our local community gain some momentum. To lose it now would be horrible. I sincerely feel and understand the constraints that it takes with financials, but I strongly urge you that this is one of those spots that it is a growth inducer. We urge your support of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Glenn Caldwell. I'm the president of Toolumee County Business Council. Toolumee County Business Council looks at economic development as something very much needed and continues to be needed and grown in the city and the county. We're pleased to hear that Larry would be able to concentrate more in the county with the tri-county agreement changing, okay? And with the slight increase in the proposed budget for him, as requested, okay? That's money spent on the revenue generation side. That's not money spent so much on your expense side. You have expenses that go out and are not going to return anything, okay? When you spend it under economic development, it has a chance to come back. We are getting into a phase in an era where development is just starting again. I would ask you to consider to not only support his budget, but to increase it. Let's keep increasing economic revenue. Now, as we learned from staff, you have some latitude in this decision. You can hide behind cutting everybody's budget by $30,000. Or you can stand and lead and make leadership decisions and allocate from one department to the other. You each have intimate knowledge of the inside workings through Tim and other people, okay? I'm asking you to lead, stand up, not only give him what he had last year, but give him the increase, and that will pay dividends, and the business council will support you there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, the public. My name is Randy Hanville. I'm a supervisor in Toolumee County, but I'm also the second vice chair of the RCRC Organization. For those who don't know what that is, that's the Rural County Representatives of California, the Rural County Caucus, 35 counties. And I guess I'm making an announcement tonight, because I haven't seen the announcement yet, but it's due shortly. RCRC is about to announce a four-part economic summit to take place in the Sonora area. And this is new. This is the first time RCRC's done this. They're focusing on economic development. The four-part summit will focus on expansion of your existing business, growing our existing businesses. And RCRC selected us, this area, for the first of these summits because of our ongoing commitment to economic development. You can read that as Toolumee County Economic Development Authority and Larry Cope. Rural counties all over the state wish to emulate us, and they'd like to steal Larry Cope. He's recognized for his efforts well beyond our boundaries, and his connections for economic development in the economic development community go well beyond those boundaries as well. He's well-known. Everywhere I go, I hear people say, "How's Larry doing? Can we borrow him?" That kind of thing. I want to thank Mr. Edwards for making the comments I have on my list. I want you to think about what it'd be like if Mervin's was still empty and Panda Express wasn't there, and the 99-cent store and others weren't there. So what happens if we, as a community, and I'm thinking the Toolumee County Economic Development Authority, which is that JPA, stop supporting economic development or slows it down? The Economic Development Authority Board, which you have two members, agreed with Larry to stop working with the central city or economic development district, much to the chagrin of four counties, well, at least three other counties. But that was the right decision, but that left a funding hole. So how do you fill that funding hole? If you don't fill the funding hole, how is that message taken? We have to downsize. I think that's a really bad message. I want to thank Mr. Kennedy for making his comments. So it will be viewed by people outside our area as abandonment, or at least pulling back from our commitment to economic development. That's a bad, bad message. So investors in the process of looking at us and investing in our community, whether it be county or city, by the way, because the city gets a lot of fallout from any development in the county, they have to look at us again and say, "Are these people reliable partners? Are they really committed to us and our effort? And can we be successful, given that environment?" They're pulling back. It's hard to rebuild trust, and it's a trust equation. So my question to you comes down to this. If you choose not to find, I am told, $15,000 to increase your share of the budget for Economic Development Authority and fill that gap, what outcome do you expect? What kind of fallout do you expect? What would you like it to be? Because your actions need to be consistent with the desired outcome. I mean, that's what we're really after here. So if you vote no, then I want to ask you, what do you expect TCEDA and your partners, how do you expect them to do in response? You want them to just bring you another rock and say, "Hey, we're going to do this and this and this," and then have you look at that one? What's the result, the end result? So we need to think about the message we're sending. We think about the message and who we're sending it to. And are we going to reduce the effectiveness of our economic development efforts in our area? I'd say yes. So the bottom line comes down to this. If you're not investing in your future, you don't have one. Economic development is our future. It is our revenue stream. Someone else said that. It's how we get out of the mess we're in. We're all in this mess together, and we have enough threats. Reducing our economic development efforts is the wrong way to go, in my opinion. So I implore you to find a way to find that $15,000 and keep this thing going and keep our commitment to all of the people that are looking at us as a place to invest and make their livelihood. Thank you very much.
Doug?
I know I've already spoken, but I want to say something. So, well, let me make a comment. I'm going to give you the $15,000, okay? I'm going to give the $15,000, and I'll apply it to the city. I'll write a check for it. I still implore you guys to make the vote, and I think it would be embarrassing if you didn't vote and put another $15,000 up against mine, but you have the $15,000 from me right now, okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy, that's a very nice offer, but I think that is absolutely deplorable. This is $15,000, and I watched you in like the blink of an eye, well, you went through the Finance Committee, to give the Sonora Area Foundation that $5,000 seed money over that toilet debacle, which I've made 16 cents for you, which is probably more than you've gotten at the Sonora Area Foundation, and you can get that $5,000 back. And then in the blink of an eye, you decided to spend $10,000 at looking at this proposed branding thing for Vision Sonora. So that's $15,000 right there that we can get back. And I'm embarrassed that a business owner would come up and show more leadership than you all have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Craig Pedro County Administrator and Sonora City native. I'm about a five-minute walk from where I grew up right now. Anyway, normally I do not come to your city council. I try to respect, you know, each other's homes, if you will, but I thought one thing that I could provide is just some perspective, as a staff person would, not a direction, but some perspective. If we go back to 2007, the economy was beginning to slip in the state and throughout the country, and it was not good here in Toolumee County. Our economic development company at the time was basically on its back. It was only through the efforts of the chamber at the time, George was still in charge of, that it was kind of on life support. And there wasn't anything going on in economic development, you know, in Toolumee County. So essentially, things had failed. But in the face of that difficult time, the city and the county and the chamber got together and said, you know, "We need to do something about this because this is unacceptable. We can do better for our community and for each other." And out of that came the genesis of the Economic Development Authority. 2008, we had a CAL-ED Forum, California Association of Local Economic Development. What do we do about economic development in Toolumee County? The group knew we needed to have an authority, or needed to have some new entity with stable funding, but what was the answer? Given the permission of the mayor at the time and the chairman of the board at the time, your then-city manager Greg Applegate, and I got to stand up in front of that body, and we laid out the beginnings of something that we'd outlined, which was the Economic Development Authority, to bring the best of the city and the county together, to bring stable funding, you know, to an economic development effort, and to provide dedicated, ongoing professional staff for that effort. And I'll never forget that day when we made that announcement together, that was very well-received by the community. And remember one gentleman saying that, to see, you know, the city administrator and the county administrator standing together, putting forth a proposal like this, made him feel confident, you know, this was the right thing to do together for the good of the community. And from there, it was only a matter of a few months that the JPA was born, just a few months later that the first board was seated, and only a few months after that that we had our first director in place, Mr. Cope. And I think others have spoken to the success, you know, of the EDA, you know, since then. But I just wanted to mention that I think some of the lessons learned from that experience is that we do need a well-funded EDA, you know, with excellent staff, and we can't back away from that. At the time, those who might have been in the community then will remember that when things got tough and another difficult time, money started to be taken away from the then- Economic Development Company, and arguably different results were coming out of that. But as that funding eroded, so did the economic development effort in the community, and it was not good. There was not much hope in the community at that time. So we need a well-funded EDA with excellent staff. The local leaders, the lessons learned, need to be bold and take decisive action in difficult times. And I'm not suggesting you don't. Actually, I know you guys all consider your jobs very seriously, as does the board of supervisors, and these are indeed difficult times, different times. We're not looking at the great recession at our door front, but yet, very difficult times. And I appreciate the challenges you all have, and I know Tim and I commiserate monthly with our cup of coffee, trying to figure out, you know, how to move forward on some things. But the creation of the EDA has been one of the best things, and this is a positive statement, one of the best things that the city and the county have ever done together. And I know the board at the time, the council at the time, I know Greg and I always felt this was one of the highest points in collaboration amongst the city and the county. It was a benefit to the community, a benefit to the economy, and directly, indirectly, however you want to look at it, a benefit to our respective, you know, coffers, because it also generated revenue, so we could provide services to those that we serve. So I just wanted to mention that. Difficult times call for difficult, you know, decisions. I think there was great courage taken by the board and the council at the time when we created the EDA. Funding was not easy then either. It's not easy for the county today. We're facing a larger budget issue than the council, but this is part of the solution as we see it and not part of the potential problem. So with that, I'm just going to leave it there. Enough has been said by others, but I wanted to just speak from some lessons learned from the past that we can always benefit from, and I just know from my heart that the EDA is a good investment, and I really do stand before you knowing that this is indeed one of the best things that we have ever done together, one of the highest points in our relationship together. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ruben Chernside from Land and Structure here in town. We work at the front end of development with new projects and new development and new businesses coming to town, people who are looking to develop things and start new things. And Larry and his group provide a very valuable tool to our community, both within our community and outside of our community. It's a single point of connection for people looking to come in and also people who are here who are looking to bring things from other areas. And it's a work that has to build up ahead of steam, and there's a massive amount of groundwork in relationship building and work that's gone into getting this to where it is today. And it's an effective tool. We use it on a frequent basis, whether we have a need or we have somebody else who has a need. And it's just been an effective thing, and I would just be reminded of the old proverb of not muzzling the ox that grinds the grain. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Then I'll bring it back up to the council.
Mayor, I have one communication.
Okay.
Just noting that it was given to you earlier by our community director for the King Inter on this, with supporting the allocation in the budget, the additional allocation in the budget submitted by Cole Presby... Presby? Presby Bell. Just wanted to note that you have received that.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, council members, questions, comments?
Yeah. Doug, I'd like you to withdraw your offer to the city. Appreciate it, but I sit here as a councilperson embarrassed that a city businessperson would have to come and offer money to accomplish something we should be accomplishing anyhow.
I'll withdraw after the vote.
If this council cannot see the need for continued economic development here in the city of Sonora, then let's bail out of it. Craig, thank you for helping Greg put all this together many years ago now. It was a partnership that I think was an encouragement to the community that, yeah, you know what? The city and the county can actually work together and get something accomplished at that point in time in our history. So thank you for your efforts in that regard. The county has approved the increase in the budget as far as their share is concerned. And I feel that this is a partnership between the city and the county, a partnership we have to justify as a genuine partnership. If this council feels they cannot come up with $15,000 to support the EDA budget, then I think we're in very serious trouble. We're looking at an investment, and we're looking for a return on the investment, and I think... return on the investment, and I think that's already been proven in this case. Carol brought up two issues of expenditures that if you feel we need to get the money secured for the $15,000, then I would say the Sonora Area Foundation that was set up originally for the public bathrooms, to support the public bathrooms, no money has been contributed to that at this point. That's $5,000. The branding facilitator, the council, allotted $10,000 for that project. We can pull that project back if we're looking for that kind of money, and there is our $15,000. I would encourage my fellow council members to... And I sit on the Finance Committee, and I know the dire straits the city is in, and it's on the same level, I guess, as the county is. The county's probably even worse than what we're looking at at this point. Yeah, dealing with a lot bigger numbers. But I certainly would encourage my fellow council members to support the $15,000, and if we need to come up with that kind of money, we can do it through the two suggestions I just made. Thank you.
Okay, I'll go. Like I said last time, I've had the opportunity to work with Larry. Again, it's been a great relationship working with him. I believe that pretty much with this council, and by the way, Doug, I wanted to see it come to a vote last time. You know, this was before us, but, you know, it's life. That's why we're here now. This is what good government looks like. You know, yes, it's only $15,000, but it's $15,000 of the public's money, and we want to make sure we're doing the right things with it. So I'm glad the council is taking another look at it. George, I agree with everything you said, and I would like to see those two issues brought back before the council later because there's the $15,000. Carol, thank you. Again, I have full confidence in Larry. He does a great job. Again, the way he works things out, he tends to be very thrifty, so I have competence, and also have competence in the board, the Economic Development Board. So again, I'm looking forward to this, come to a vote tonight so I can vote for it.
I have a question for staff, and that is, Tim, are we... Do we have the capacity of just going back? And I thought that the branding money was coming out of a different fund where it wasn't just a general fund, where we could pull back?
The branding money and the deposit, if you will, that's with the Sonora Area Foundation, came out of what I'll call the Economic Development Fund. It was money that the city sequestered as a part of the money that came back from a... For money we had to release from the redevelopment agency. The total was about $94,000, if I remember correctly. We've used it for a variety of different activities, and in fact, maybe early on, might have used it to help pay our... Some contribution for the TCEDA, I don't remember, but it is not... It could be in the general fund, but it's not. It's been kept separate for economic development activities. So it wouldn't be inappropriate to use those two sources to make up the difference in the budget this year.
Thank you. Well, one of my concerns, if we don't have the money, and staff says we don't, that we're cutting to the bone otherwise, is are we going to cut buyer, are we going to cut police? I mean, what do we cut? If we can get it that easily, then it makes it a little easier to essentially ignore staff recommendations.
Just keep in mind, it's one-time money, and it isn't like that fund is ongoing and building. I mean, when it's spent, it's spent. So given our projections, you'll be wrestling with what's the appropriate funding level next year, given what our five-year forecasts are, because the financial challenge isn't going to go away. It's just going to get worse.
Thank you. I firmly believe that the best thing for the city is going to be light and medium industry or other good jobs that are pulled in, and I think Larry's doing a wonderful job. I do have a question, though, and Larry, you might want to address this. And that is, I believe that you said that this roughly $100,000 that we're replacing into the budget was representing 60% of your work, which is why it ended up getting dropped. Is that... That's what I had remembered.
Yeah.
In the last meeting.
Larry Cope with the Tuolumne County Economic Development Authority. What we're replacing as in income loss from the Central Sierra Economic Development District is $45,000. The other parts are increased in cost. We have the same increased costs that the city and county has, plus also, if we're going to focus on attraction of those type of jobs, we need a little bit larger budget than a $10,000 marketing budget. In fact, we proposed a $37,500 marketing budget. In comparison, your visitor bureau has $638,000 in marketing. So I think we're being very conservative on trying to attract under those dollars.
Thank you very much. I'm glad I cleared that up in my own mind.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Caravanta?
It appears to me it's a moot point now. George is going to support the budget, and our JPA requires us to follow that, so it's becoming a disappointment. I do agree that we need to... Well, let's just say we should revisit those two expenditures that were mentioned earlier. I don't want to get into any agonizing issues and discussion of the issue. However, if the analysis of the... By the city's attorney is correct that at least one member of the city's representation has to approve of the budget, I pretty much know what that's going to be. So that's where we're at. George is safe. But I would like to revisit those two items, because that basically comes to that seemingly.
Well, if the budget's approved, we'll identify those... Let me back up. If your recommendation is to approve the TCEDA budget as proposed, then when you consider your city budget, we'll identify those funds as a way to make up that difference. We have programmed in our forecasting maintaining the budget with a 3% growth. So still have to make up the difference, and we'll identify... And then through that, through the city's budget review and adoption process, then those funds can be identified as how to make up the difference for the shortfall.
Okay. Well, first of all, I want to say that this whole conversation has nothing to do with the work that Larry Cope has done and the putting the city of Sonora and the county of Tuolumne out there on the map throughout the state of California and everywhere else, especially with national businesses that have come into this area. It was never anything about that. It's always been, from my perspective, that can we afford it? And I think that all of the council members sitting here know that, you know, we're responsible for the people's money and how it's being spent. The Economic Development Fund, which is not the general fund, does have dollars in it that has been used for different things to do with economic development. If we can take the money out of that fund and not touch the general fund, then I would be more supportive of this. But one thing I would like to say to the Economic Development Authority Board is that, not only for the city, but also for the county, that a Finance Committee be put together and look strategically at the budget to see what it's going to look like after fiscal year 18. And before we have the next EDA... Before the next EDA board, that the budget that's presented is a clear and concise budget. I did take the time to meet with Debbie Batista, with the company, and I... Because I had expressed at the last meeting that there was an error in the budget, and there's... And I have shared with Mr. Cope the error. And also, I asked that for fiscal year 18 for the board, that it be... That everything that needs to be inclusive, based upon different changes, come back to the EDA board. So from that perspective, we need economic development. We can't grow the community without it. All of these businesses that are here, that are doing all that they can to provide more sales, generation of tax dollars, et cetera, we all know how we're funded, and we need economic development. That was never the intent of this whole conversation. It was 100%, can we afford to do it? How can we do it? And we're going to have the same issue next year when we're having this same conversation again.
Right. And can I make a clarification point on your part about the budget? Just for the clarification of the rest of the board and the audience, is that in last year's budget, we had a part-time salary line item of $6,053. Since that budget line item was removed this year, that was to actually pay for contractual help that we had for the Innovation Lab. We let that staff go. It was in the 2017 budget. We have not paid all of that out, so that money will be left over at the end of the year. So those funds were not in the 2018 budget. So therefore, that line item was removed, and so even 2018's budget is 100% correct. The 2017 numbers, if you looked at the sheet and referenced to it, that $6,053 would have been wrong. So if you would have added your numbers down like you did, it was missing. When you brought that up at the last city council meeting, I was trying to figure out what you were referencing, so I do now have that for the clarification. And so there's nothing changed on the 2018 budget. There was one other item you also brought up in an email, and it was about a contract change, my contract change of where they would put the car allowance that is part of my compensation package. Prior, it was tied into the salary line item, and now it's going to be a separate line item under expenses. The difference between... Reason why that was not showed in this was this budget was already approved by the TCEDA board prior to the TCEDA board making contractual changes to my contract at our last board meeting in April. Or sorry, last board meeting, yes, in March, sorry. So I just wanted to clarify those two points.
So would this be the... So will there be a different budget than a corrected budget that will come to the TCEDA board at their next board meeting?
We can add that 2017 numbers, but the 2018 numbers are not going to change. So you're going to be voting on the exact same numbers as you're doing... As you would do tonight. And the numbers do not change for 2018. The only error of omission was the 2017 number, which was just a point of reference to the 2018 number. So you could look from what did we do this year, what did we do last year. But it does not... There is no part-time salaries plan for 2018 budget. We have no staff at the Innovation Lab.
I understand that. So what you're telling me is then that the fiscal year 18 budget that's proposed has the... What the board approved for your salary and also your $6,000 car allowance already included in here?
And in addition to Mallory Sperry's, who's my assistant's salary, and those numbers were figured by Debbie Batista's staff, and were given to us, and that's what we have plugged in. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so... The... Let's see, what are we... Let's go back to what we're approving. Continued consideration of the Tuolumne County Economic Development Authority proposed FY 2018 budget for approval, changes or modifications as may be recommended by the city council.
Madam Mayor, if you're looking for a motion at this point, we agree with the conversation.
I would look for a motion.
I would move that Sonora supports the Tuolumne County Economic Development Authority proposed fiscal year 2018 budget.
Support. Is that support?
Whatever term you want to put in there. Approved, I guess, is the appropriate.
Recommend approval of the budget based upon...
Yeah, I'll second that, George.
Could that be clarified, Governor?
We must recommend approval of the proposed budget.
Before I call for the question, I'd like to ask staff, do we need to do anything to, at this juncture, regarding utilizing dollars out of the Economic Development Fund?
We'll bring that back to you as a part of the city's budget adoption process, and identify those sources as the funding source to make up the difference.
Okay, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No?
No.
And I'm going to specify why I'm voting no. Because I don't think this budget's correct. I don't think the numbers are correct. So I'm going to vote no at this juncture. So it passes 3-2 with Williams and Plummer voting no. Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to new business. Item number one, consideration to accept the fiscal year 2016-17 third quarter budget performance report and approved staff's recommendation regarding nonessential, non-committed expenditures, a compensated absence reserve, and development of a fiscal sustainability plan.
Not sure if I should take offense that I can clear a room. Thanks to the loyal staff for staying. This is the third quarter budget status report update, and you'll see there's four recommendations in this report. A similar report was taken to the Finance Committee on April 20th and approved to bring forward tonight to council. So a quick update on the actual third quarter results. Revenues are coming in well. Our sales tax and TOT are leading the pack, both doing well when we look at how they were doing at this time last year. As a result, we have an overall revenue increase that we're recommending of $40,000, and that's spread between TOT and our building permits. And there's a chart on page 13 that outlines each of those for you. And we do have one revenue source that we have a reduction for, actually, two, I'm sorry, franchise fees and charges for services. It is likely that we just have some late payments coming in, but this is the information we had at the time of doing the report, so wanted to present the full picture to you as of March 31st. On the flip side, for expenditures, and this is general fund only, they're trending high when compared to the same time when compared to the same time in 15, 16. At March 31st, our salaries and benefits are high, and we've, we've had this conversation many times. There's the cash outs for compensated absences. And then we've, we've simply had a very adverse year with our self-insured health insurance costs. So that's the risk the city takes, and this is one of the, one of those years. So if you look at page 13, you'll see that there's a $30,000 budget adjustment for salaries. Again, that's to do with cash leave outs. There's $15,000 for outside services. That has to do with our computer upgrade, some of the ad hoc assignments that have occurred throughout the year, a $15,000 budget adjustment for legal services. Again, those are the ad hoc assignments, the marijuana workshops, some personnel-related matters that involve legal consultation. And $12,500 increase to the Visitors Bureau, that's to offset the increase in the TOT. So we've committed to giving them 25% of what we take in. And then self-insurance is the big one, and that's an $85,000 transfer out. And those are those, we've had a handful of claims that have exceeded our stop-loss measure of $65,000. So that's really cost the city quite a bit this year. There's one other adjustment, and that's to the Measure I funds, and that's for $15,000 for those health insurance costs as well. Page 13, we also want to make sure we gave you as comprehensive of a picture as we could. So there's in red, the prior approved adjustments, and then there's a total on the far right-hand side of the page. So you can see throughout the year what we have, have presented to you. Overall, we have $157,500 in expenditure increases. If you net that against the increased revenues that we're proposing, it's $117,500 in increased expenditures. I would like to say that when we look at the numbers, if we take away the cash leave outs and the health insurance, we, we could have absorbed the other costs, the extra legal costs, the extra kind of ad hoc assignments, if you will, with those increased revenues and how we've been trying to control those expenditures that we have control over. But those others have just added up to too much. That, that will have to come from general fund reserves at this point. Tim mentioned for the last item that we have directed each department that we're freezing costs to the extent that we can. So we have already contracted expenditures that we, we have to make. We have public safety and, you know, essential expenditures that we don't have a lot of ability to freeze. But anything that we can, that we do have discretion over, we, we are recommending to freeze those at that point, just as a mechanism of trying to mitigate the use of those reserve funds. So that's one of the recommendations presented in the report. The other recommendation is to try to get ahead of this compensated absences issue that I think the city's dealt with for many years. We want to try to do is get some plans in place to, and some funds in place to kind of deal with these things that you're, you're obligated to pay. So the employees have earned these leave balances. They have a right to the payments for them when they separate from the city. And instead of designating reserve funds to use those, we want to set up a separate compensated absences reserve fund. The city has one last payment left on the USDA bonds. The bond covenant required that there be an indenture fund set aside for that. So it's about $182,000 that we have for that indenture. We have a payment of about $48,000 that'll come out in August. So what we're proposing to do is take that indenture fund, make that final $48,000 payment out of that. The remaining 132-ish thousand, we're going to set up in a compensated absences reserve fund. At which point in the future, when we have these cash leave outs, it'll, it'll come out of that fund instead of being a surprise out of the general fund. The other piece of that proposal is starting in fiscal year 1819. We want to keep funding that fund based on the annual accrual rate, which is, you know, somewhere, it changes each year, about 40-ish thousand dollars. So we would just build that into our general fund budget, put it in the compensated absences fund. So we will constantly maintain enough money in there to pay for the cash outs when, when they occur. So that is the third recommendation on your staff report. The fourth recommendation is to engage the Finance Committee in coming up with a fiscal sustainability plan. And what that really means is we want to have some conversations about revenues and expenditures, and what can we do to increase our revenues, and what proposals is the Finance Committee willing to support in reducing expenditures. We have a very limited operating budget, primarily staffing, just like every other city. So we want to have a conversation about what, what those tough decisions are going to be and what we want to bring forward to the council. So that's the last recommendation. If you have any questions? Oh, I did want to point out, I have one error in my budget status report. On page 17, that's the Measure I money. It says there's no change. That should say the $15,000.
Say that again?
Under recommended budget revision, it says no change. Earlier in the report, I discussed a $15,000 adjustment for the self-insured medical costs.
Yes. She, she just?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Typo.
Or comments? Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to say that on the last issue where I supported the expenditure of $15,000 certainly does not minimize the situation of the city's budget for our coming year. And I understand that it's not looking any prettier the year after that, and the year after that. So, so we've got some issues to deal with, and I certainly didn't want to minimize that, those issues that we'll be facing.
We'll have some tough choices to make.
One can presume that we're going to be seeing some return on our investment, I would hope. And with that expectation, it will be easier.
So, any other questions or comments by the council? Any public comment?
Ms. Callaway, you always do such a good job. So for the public's viewpoint, I would like clarification of just exactly what the stipend is that each city council person gets per meeting.
You would like, you would like to know what the city?
Stipend is, yes.
Members are paid?
Yes.
Well, as per state law, the council members can be paid $300 per month.
Okay.
That's based upon, that's in the, in the California Constitution?
Yes.
And back when things got tough, back in '08, '09 timeframe, the council decided to reduce their stipend by 50%. So the mayor receives $150 a month, and each council member receives $125 a month. Per month.
Per month, okay.
Per month. We?
Now, if you miss a meeting, are you docked?
No.
No. So you get 150 or 125 for serving as a city council meeting?
Right.
Per month, no matter what you do?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And then, in full disclosure, I am a Walmart stockholder. And so my understanding is that this local Sonora Walmart expects when their building commitment is finished and they're up and running, that they will do $100 million in business at this Walmart. So that's going to be a fairly substantial tax revenue increase, I believe. Do we know what, I don't know what they've been making.
That's not information we can share with the council or the public.
Okay. But I mean, I would expect that that would be a revenue increase you could expect. But it seems to me we need to find ways to make money.
One comment that I'll make regarding the addition to the Walmart store is that the grocery addition, as we all know, we don't pay sales tax on groceries. So when you look at that $100 million that they're expected to generate, a lot of that will be groceries, I'm sure.
But you pay tax on hot food.
Right. But, but the majority of the food in the groceries?
Right.
Right. So it's groceries.
Well, but still.
We're hoping, we're hoping.
That's an increase.
And?
Walmart's been good to me. I expect Walmart to be good to us.
There you go.
You know? So I won't complain about my stock dividends.
Okay.
So, but it seems to me we need to find ways to make revenue.
Generate dollars. Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. And before I ask for a motion, I do want to say to staff, which includes Jennifer and Tim, that the compensated absences that we're going to be put making as a budget item, a line item, I've been concerned about that ever since that I've been elected. That and unfunded liabilities have been a real concern for me. And the only way we can plan for them correctly is to budget for them. So thank you for, both for that. So I'll ask for a motion.
I'll move to approve, to accept the 2016-17 third quarter budget performance report and approved staff recommendation regarding nonessential, non-committed expenditures.
Any other questions or comments?
Just, just staff recommendations. Because you only mentioned one.
Sorry, I should, I could have read it all through, and then I can read it all through.
Okay. Any public comment? Seeing none, I bring it back to the council for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Okay, item, item number two, consideration to adopt resolution number 05-01-2017-B, allowing open containers and public consumption of alcoholic beverages within the street closures for the Motherlode Roundup Parade on Saturday, May the 13th, 2017, between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. Good evening, Lieutenant.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Honorable Counsel, Tru Vanderwilsen, our Police Department. Yeah, so with a recommendation for council to adopt resolution 0501-2017-B, which would allow for public consumption of alcohol in open containers during the Motherlode Roundup Parade and within the established boundaries of the event identified by street closures. As you know, the Motherlode Roundup is scheduled for Saturday, May 13th, from 10 to 1 o'clock. And historically, open containers and public consumption has been allowed during this event. This event's been going on a number of years, as you all know, as long as I can remember. And it has been a practice over the years. One of the, the issues that we have to look at is Sonora Municipal Code 908010 does not allow for open containers of alcoholic beverages or the consumption of alcoholic beverages in public places. So this resolution would allow that for the temporary time period of the parade itself and within those boundaries. And as soon as the parade concludes or at the direction of the Police Department, alcoholic beverages would be moved, removed from the street.
Okay. Any questions by the council?
I know this has been done a number of years. Have there ever, ever really been any issues?
Naturally, when you add alcohol in large quantities, it increases the chances for law enforcement services and the need thereof. However, one of the things we have to consider is the, you know, how do we enforce it? And the resources that we'll take to enforce it. Yes, we've had issues with alcoholic beverages. Maybe something we can look at in the future when we have more time to discuss options is limiting, you know, types of containers such as bottles. But generally, you know, our community is used to it. The, the posse who are coordinates this event is generally pretty good at relaying to the contestants and, and the crowds that responsible alcoholic, alcoholic beverage use is encouraged. And we are out there looking for violations.
And when you say within the boundaries, so that means that any of the streets that we have closed is within the boundary?
That's correct. Identified by the street closures.
It's not just Washington Street, it's side streets also.
It would be the side streets between Green Street and Stewart Street and down Washington Street.
And the parking lots that are closed or no?
Parking lots that were, that were within, within those boundaries, yes.
So my question is, in the resolution, the second paragraph, the last sentence, it states, let's see, this is one long sentence, something to do with the boundaries of the following street closures on Saturday, May 13th, commencing at 10:00 a.m. and concluding at 1:00 p.m., unless otherwise directed earlier upon the authority of the Sonora Police Department. Can you explain why that's in there?
Yes. The anticipated end time for the parade is 1 o'clock, should it, should it end earlier? And sometimes it does, quite often it does. We do give a, generally at least a 15-minute time period for the crowds to disperse as we, as we keep the roadways closed. But at the time we start opening up roads prior to that, we have everyone remove alcoholic beverages from the, from the sidewalks and city areas, public areas.
Okay. And then my last question is, do you, are you of the opinion that we need to look at this chapter 9.08 and probably update it based upon these types of events?
If, if the council wishes to make it a permanent ordinance allowing for these special events, then we can definitely look at it. Otherwise, we can, you know, deal with it by resolution every year. But I think it does merit some discussion, how we want to approach it. Like I said, for example, do we want to limit bottles, just, just cans, that type of thing.
And there's, has been other entities that have expressed an interest of being able to have special events and do something like this. So I would suggest, I would say that we should consider relooking at this ordinance. Okay, any other questions or comments? Any public comment?
Well, I was here when we passed the ordinance, and I am absolutely opposed to this. You got to be kidding me. Between 10:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m., you need alcohol? And if you read the 2016-2017 healthcare assessment for Tuolumne County, we have an extraordinarily high rate of alcohol abuse in this county. And there was thousands of visits for intoxication overdoses, accidental overdoses, using our medical services here. And I think we need to put a stop to this. So I don't even know what to say when I read this. I was like, oh my God. So I just think we need to make a statement on behalf of community health, because they can go down to the fairgrounds and drink alcohol all day long and all night long. And we had a big discussion at the merchants' meeting, and a lot of the store owners are upset that they can't serve alcohol at Second Saturday. But you can come down on the streets of Sonora in front of children and the public and the world. And I remember when the series police chief came up, and he's young and has young children, and went on a news radio program and talked about what he was surrounded by and what he witnessed in front of his children during a parade, which didn't make us look good. So I certainly think this needs to be revisited. And this is kind of late in the game to come and talk about this if you wanted to deny it, but I just think this sends an appalling message.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Then I'll bring it back to the council for a motion. Then I'll bring it back to the council for a motion.
I'll move to approve resolution number 51-2017-B, allowing open containers and public consumption of alcoholic beverages within the street closures for the Motherlode Roundup Parade on Saturday, May 13, 2017, between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m.
Any other questions or discussion? Any other public comment? Then I'll bring it back to the council for a vote. All in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously, and, and then staff will work on updating this ordinance. Okay. All right. Item number three is consideration to adopt a city mission statement and an updated vision statement. Staff report?
We included in your packet the drafts that the council worked on during your retreat. If we're going to move forward with those, they should be formally adopted by the council. The, I included the vision statement from before as comparison to the vision statement that the city currently has. We do not have a mission statement as, for comparison, but the mission statement will serve as a guide in how to develop our strategic plan, so it's, and we plan to bring that back to you as a part of the budget hearing process. So, with that, I'd, if the council's still comfortable with the language that's in here, we would ask that you, by motion, adopt both the mission and vision statement as revised.
Questions?
Yeah. I think, this late hour, I think if we are going to start wordsmithing, I might have to continue.
I'd hope you wouldn't, since we did that before, but you're certainly welcome to if you'd like.
Is there some serious changes you're thinking?
Oh, no, no, I haven't, I don't know how these things start getting into wordsmithing, so. And I'm not fucking up on you.
No.
We did spend a lot of time in consideration of this. We probably could wordsmith all day long, go into the next thing.
Any other comments or questions by the...
I like both of them.
The only question I have is infrastructure. Creating a safe and healthy community that cover infrastructure? That's my, that's the only thing I thought of when I was reading through it, but otherwise, I'm good with it. Any public comment? Then I'll bring it back to the council for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll move approval of the vision statement draft and the mission statement draft.
Any other comments or questions? Any other public comment? Then I'll bring it back to the council for a vote. All in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. Okay, item J, monthly reports, we have none. Any public comment? Item K, Vision Sonora Committee Report, we have none. I will say that the next meeting is scheduled for May 11 at 9:00 a.m., if there's anything that the committee needs to address. Item L is communications, we have none. So, I'll move to item M. And I'll start with Ms. Callag. Anything more from the Community Services Department?
It'll take me too long to get there. It's all good.
Okay. Ms. Callaway, anything more?
I think I have to learn enough news for tonight.
Enough news for tonight, okay. Chief New, anything from the Fire Department?
I just wanted to report that it was a beautiful weekend for Spring Festival on Saturday, and the Fire Museum volunteers and city staff from the Fire Department that was off-duty had their best sells for tri-tip sandwiches and snow cones, and had a great event, so thanks for everyone that came out. If you didn't get a chance, we did display the COMB tool and had a public display for that for everyone to look at, so thanks for everyone who came out.
We were asking for volunteers to use it on the car, but they declined.
Okay. All right. Interim Chief Lieutenant, anything else? Okay.
No reporter here.
All right. Then Mary Jane, anything from you?
No, thank you.
All right. Anything from City Council or our... I think I'm getting tired.
Nothing.
Oh, no, nothing from the two of you, okay. Councilmember Garbetta? Councilmember Segawee?
No, I just, the Spring Festival, it looked to me to be another big success. I'm waiting for a report from Sheila to find out.
Okay. Councilmember Hawkins?
I have nothing tonight.
Councilmember Plummer?
Nothing to inflict on the public.
Okay, and I will say the same thing about Spring Festival. There were a lot of people in the downtown area, and again, Sheila Wilkinson did a great job putting it together, and I did get comments about, about the Coffin Park area and having vendors down there, so thank you, staff, for making all of that happen. And on that note, I will adjourn this meeting at 8:07.